Seventh Town Council informational work session agenda. Let the record read that the entire seven members of the Town Council are present. Before I go to the next item, I want to recognize that today is Pearl Harbor Day. I took a walk over to our Veterans Park this afternoon and I was able to spend some time at the, we have a little, I call it a wall of fame over there. We have a wall of all the, all the local Chesapeake Beach area people who fought in World War II. And it's got, I don't know how many names there are, maybe 50, something like that. But I found it interesting to read some of the names because they're still very prominent, not only in the beach towns, but in the county. So for the sake of that, I'm just going to read off a few of them and you'll, you'll recognize them. Bowen, Buckmaster, Chaney, Cochran, Hall, King, Klein, Loveless, Odell, Owens, Paulings, and Ward. I'm pretty certain that none of those local heroes are still with us. So what I like to do, if we could, is to just have a moment of silence for all those who fought in World War II. In particular, those who made the ultimate sacrifice on that fatal day 79 years ago in the island of Oahu. Thank you, everybody. Seems like more and more as the years go by, you don't hear much about Pearl Harbor Day anymore. I guess that's a, that's a sign of getting old, I guess. Okay, with that, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Flag United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. First item that we have is to, the process for zoning code review recommendations amendments. I'm going to ask Holly just to, you know, give us a lead and then hand it off to Todd. Started on this, okay, thanks.
Okay, so the Town Council adopted Housing and Livability Code in May of 2019. This legislation provided a rental inspection permitting program for rentals of over 30 days. Prior to this legislation, rentals of less than 30 days were only permitted by the town's zoning ordinance through a permitted bed and breakfast program. The town recently issued clarifications of the difference between an actual bed and breakfast and what we're calling a short-term rental or also known as an Airbnb. So those clarifications can be found on the town's website under property information. And we also sent this out via eBlast last week. And so just wanted to clarify those two factors, just for the general public as well. And then turn it over to Todd in terms of the process for reviewing the zoning code moving forward.
Okay, just double checking, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I think, you know, I think I saw the email by Derek earlier today. And I think that was a good process in that the, really the fact finding process would go before the, you know, zoning, planning and zoning. And that way they could, you know, hear the public, understand the process, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the council. I think that was, we discussed that a little bit earlier. And I still think that would really be an appropriate process for, to get a lot of fact finding going on before things come to you. So I think that would be, you know, really an excellent idea as to, as to the process to follow.
Okay, thank you, Todd. And I do believe that the item is on the Planning and Zoning's agenda for January to begin their arduous process. But, okay, I like to hear from the council. I'll begin with Derek.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So this obviously is a, an issue that's come to light in the last few months. And we've had a number of public meetings where members of the public have brought this up. And we know, as it was just stated, that the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to review this in January. Personally, I think that's, I've always kind of thought that was the right place to investigate this. I always kind of feared if our, if our group took a stab at it, you know, it might, you know, either be, although proactive, it might, it might, we might not actually evaluate, be able to evaluate the whole process, give it due diligence before taking some action. And in really being a zoning issue, planning and zoning is the right place to do that. I talked to a couple of Planning and Zoning members recently and they're, I think they're happy to take this on, but there was some question on what the council feels or is looking for, for them, for them to do. And so for me, and I'll just, I'll just kind of step through my expectations. I, I want them, I hope they'll take a very public look at this issue, encouraging public participation on both sides of the issues or of this issue, specifically with short-term rentals less than 30 days and that are not considered bed and breakfast. Look at the pros and cons of both sides as it relates to our town. Evaluate what other jurisdictions have done. We're not, certainly not the only ones that have or are dealing with this issue. Establish or provide either essential or suggested updates to either the zoning code or the housing code if applicable. And provide practical recommendations that we can consider as a body to, you know, either implement or evaluate to address the issue however, you know, we feel is, is the appropriate way to address this issue. So, so I'm happy Planning and Zoning is taking this on. Based on the information provided in the background, it falls well in their scope. So I'm encouraged to, to see their process. And I guess I would also encourage that if any of their members have any questions or other clarifications after, you know, we discuss it tonight, that they should reach out to, you know, each of us specifically. And, you know, we can give them that background so that their time is useful and, and appropriate for this matter. So I think that's all I have to say right now.
All right, thank you, Derek. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so yeah, I think this Planning and Zoning taking up this issue is the, also the appropriate process that should be used. A couple concerns, having served on Planning and Zoning. You know, one thing that's very, can be very disheartening is, of course, if you take up an issue and it never sees the light of day with councils. So I do think, you know, it is important that council follows through. If they're going to go through the effort and work to get input and make a decision and do the fact finding, that we need to, you know, do our due diligence once they've done theirs. I, you know, one thing, we've heard a lot from the folks who are in support of, of these Airbnb type of rentals. Haven't heard much from folks who may get impacted. And so I certainly hope that there is plenty of effort to get additional input from residents. And, you know, one thing I have, I've mentioned before in some discussions with colleagues and residents is that many of the homeowner, homeowner associations already forbid that type of rental. So really, it's real, just going to impact in many cases, just the folks who are living in the older parts of town that do not have HOAs with those kind of rules in place. And so I think it's also important that if those are the folks who are going to be impacted the most potentially, they should definitely, there should definitely be outreach towards those areas of our community. And I think, you know, Derek gave a very good summary, I think, of what, what we should expect. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morris?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I don't have too much to add. This is pretty much what I think we figured, the road we were heading down here. My only question, it's still a question, an observation here in the notice that was handed out here for Town Hall regarding the process. Planning and zoning to review town code as it relates to short-term rentals and provide a recommendation to Town Council on this matter. I'm presuming now then that Planning and Zoning is going to be looking at, I guess, both extremes here, whether, you know, I guess impacts, pluses and minuses of just outright barring them, as well as the opposite side of that, which would be allowing them, I presume, with some regulation. And they're becoming back to the council, I guess, with data on both fronts. Is that correct?
Well, if you're ready for me, that's my understanding is that the Planning and Zoning was in essence going to be, you know, making a recommendation based upon information and giving that recommendation to council ultimately.
Recommendation for both scenarios, though, and not just one recommendation on what to do. It sounds to me, and I'm presuming that the recommendations and intricacies, I guess, and effects of a decision that could be made either way, that's really my point. They're working two fronts, is what I'm presuming here, gathering information on, on kind of both extremes, more or less. Which I guess, I'm presuming will also include regulations, suggested regulations to control them. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I, let me interject a second if I can help you, Greg. I don't, just based on my prior experience, I, you know, I don't particularly, you know, think we can have a heavy hand and tell Planning and Zoning what to do. I mean, you know, they're a board, they're going to do their due diligence, they're going to do their job. They, they know Planning and Zoning more than, than we do. If they were to come back to County Council with, with something that we, you know, needed to request more information, we would certainly send it back and ask them that. But we're, we're, you know, that's a board of professional people who take, you know, pride in what they do for the town. So we're certainly not going to direct them to what we want. Well, I have all the confidence in the world and Chairman Brown to lead that board and, you know, doing the right thing and looking into things, you know, properly. If that helps.
Yeah, I'm certainly not suggesting one way or the other at this point, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to understand what the action item really is for Planning and Zoning. Here, are they looking at, are they going to provide, and this is for both ways. I'm not trying to hash out this issue one side or the other. I'm just, so they're going to, they're going to pair information for the council to look at and to review that would be, that would help the council decide one way or the other, I guess is what I'm saying.
That's probably a close statement, but I think we need to go ahead and just, you know, let, let them take the ball and stay tuned.
I'm okay with that. I'm down with that. I just, I would be disappointed. And there would be a lot of people discouraged if their meeting came up and, you know, and they really didn't know, and they had questions about things and things kind of got knocked back and forth a couple of times. That's all. I don't have any other comments about this matter at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Larry?
Want to reinforce the comments by council members Fabre and Partik on what I feel is the critical importance of reaching out to gather additional public input. What we've heard so far is some very articulate statements being offered in favor of the Airbnbs. I've heard just casually comments from individuals that they don't support. But I think it would be very helpful if we could do a very aggressive public outreach. And as was mentioned, we probably need to not only do a very aggressive public outreach, but maybe even focus that a little bit on those areas that might be most directly impacted by some kind of a decision like this, that being the older residential areas in town that are not under the guidance, governance of HOAs. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
Well, first I want to echo what, what everyone said so far. I have some concerns as this is laid out right now, and I'll tell you why. I have heard from a number of people, I even met with someone this morning, had virtual coffee with someone this morning, who's very much in favor of short-term rentals, but who also recognizes the challenges. And so echoes, you know, this person echoes a lot of the same things we've all been saying. Seems like there's a valid discussion here. Certainly there needs to be some regulation and restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. What I don't see is how Planning and Zoning gets the same level of public input that we're getting as council people, and maybe I'm wrong about that. So I just want to state here that I think that's critically important that we hear. You know, there's clearly a very organized effort that has reached out to council about the short-term rentals. There has not been a similar level of organization opposed. But I don't know that folks know to reach out to Planning and Zoning. And so I would hope that we make that very well-publicized and very easy for people to do. I guess that's maybe where I'll, I'll stop and I can be educated better on the process for sure.
Thank you, Charlie. Madam Vice President?
Oh, yes. I think Planning and Zoning is a proper venue for this conversation. And what I'm hoping we get out of it is recommendations to Town Council that are specific changes to the code if necessary, and then policies for implementation. I also echo what I've heard here tonight, which is there has been a concerted effort by those that have an economic interest in having short-term rentals and less formal sort of input from those who do not. I have a concern that there will be differences throughout town between those that are in HOA areas and those that are not. So I would hope that whatever Planning and Zoning does come up with is applicable to the town as a whole and not just singling out those non-HOA areas. We do need to work in making concerted effort to ensure that we get public comment from those that are going to be the most affected potentially. That is kind of hypocritical of what I just said, if this is a policy that is applicable throughout the town, throughout the municipality of Chesapeake Beach as opposed to just non-HOA areas. So somehow we need to ensure that, that we get those individuals actively involved, whether that be just through email blasts, which there are actually people in town that do not have a computer and do not have email. Possibly through a newsletter. It might be one of those times if it's that important to the town and to Planning and Zoning to have public input to send a letter to everyone in town, letting them know about the opportunity to have their voices heard on this issue at the next planning, January Planning and Zoning meeting. Um, so basically in sum, I, I really hope that what we get is Planning and Zoning looking at both the pros and the cons of short-term rentals in a very thorough way. Whether it be the economic impacts, which would be a positive, or what does it really do to the fabric of our neighborhoods and our community as one of the potential negatives. And then provide us with specific changes, if there are any, that they have to our code and actually policy implementations. On any sort of ideas for licensing or how someone's license could be revoked if the neighbors complain too much. Look at parking, whatever the issues might be. It's up to them to decide. But I do have some concerns about how fair and equitable it could be if it's not implemented as a municipal, as a whole, policy or recommendation, because it will affect the older parts of town more, I fear. You've got to make every effort to reach out to those folks. So I look forward to seeing what they come up with. I hope they take, and I know they will. They're great folks, great volunteers. They'll look at all the pros and all the cons and then come up with recommendations. Because we know that if someone has an economic interest in something, that they're going to make more of a concerted effort to have their voices heard. But I worry about the little people. That's my comment. And I agree with basically everything that's been said here tonight.
Thank you, Valerie. Did you want to add anything, Todd?
No, I thought that was an excellent synopsis. I liked the way Valerie was talking about, you know, the additions of having the regulations involved and, you know, the details of the regulations for the, for the Airbnbs. And, you know, I think one of the regulations ultimately is going to be, you know, whether you would want to do a maximum number. If it were to be approved, a maximum number. But also, you know, I thought you did it really nice about outlining exactly where and what the regulations are going to be about those people who are using it and as well as the application and so forth. So, and I think what's important is all of that really is going to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning. And, and so all of those factual issues. And it's, and it's not like, you know, the council's going to be in appeal. I'm sure you're going to have a public hearing yourselves at some time in the future along with that information for anything new. So, and so I think it's great that everything that was just said is going to be a basis for ultimately what the council's review is going to be as well as, but probably was going to be a future public hearing, you know, before you. So, yeah, I think the, everything that was said so far, you know, being, being a synopsis as to what you're looking at in the future, yeah, I think, I think everything was a great suggestion.
May I ask Todd one question?
Just a second. Thanks, Todd. I just want to see if anybody in the council wants to make a final remark before we move on. I guess I'll just start with Derek and move down the line.
No, nothing further.
Okay, Keith?
Yes, I believe in the documentation or the agenda for tonight, there was mention of whether this should be considered as part of the comprehensive plan or something considered on its own. We haven't really talked about that. I mean, it sounded like something considered on its own would make sense. But I was just curious what other, what other folks were thinking. And I was also curious what the timeline was for the finalization of the comprehensive plan.
Greg?
No further comments. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Larry?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Charlie?
A question and a comment. Just for my own education, would it be the case that Planning and Zoning would come to council with a proposal and we would either vote on it or kick it back to them? Or would they come to us with a proposal with options from which we would debate and vote on various parts of? In other words, do we have that level of input?
I think it's going to be waiting to see.
Okay, fair enough. And my comment is following up on what Keith said. If, if it seems to me this should be taken up sooner than what will end up happening with the comprehensive plan, that's an opinion, but it just seems to me the comprehensive plan is still a work in progress. And I think we need to move a little more quickly, if it's possible, on this issue based on what we're hearing from citizens. Thank you.
Did you want to make a final comment, Valerie?
Yes, please, if I may. Thank you. First, just my comments on the comprehensive plan. I basically agree with what Charlie just said, in so much as the comprehensive plan is a vision. The only part of the comprehensive plan that is truly in my mind implementable is what comes out of the planning and zoning map, where land uses and parcels can be affected by, by changes. And so by saying I agree with Charlie, what I mean specifically is, is that I think that the comprehensive plan is not the proper venue for this, although the concepts behind grand vision for Airbnbs or short-term rentals might be part and of the comprehensive planning conducive to it. I think that this action, whatever it might be, whether it be action or no action by us, is something that is outside of that. Just because we are looking, at least I'm looking, for specific planning and zoning recommendations. I'm not necessarily looking at land use changes or anything that would be in the planning and zoning map. So that's my comment on the comprehensive plan. I agree, in essence, I believe with what Keith said and with what Charlie said about that not potentially being the proper place for this issue. Although it can be part of it, you know, as a part of the vision of what we hope to see in 40 years or 20 years in the town. This is my question, and I'm not sure of whom it goes to. It might go to Todd. And as both a resident and elected official, I have some comments and suggestions for planning and zoning on this issue. And my question in all sincerity is this, what is the best way for me to provide those, those comments or, or questions that I may have? Should it be directly to Planning and Zoning? Should it be in public comment in Planning and Zoning? Should it be, because I do understand that I am a resident first, but I also hold a different sort of position as an elected official. And so what would you advise me if I have specific comments and suggestions and things that Planning and Zoning in the short-term rental arena, I wish they would look at?
Can I?
Yeah, I, well.
Yeah, go ahead, Todd.
I'm sorry. No, I was going to say, I think you should address it as a citizen, even though you may be coming back to you later on as a public official. But if you're going to be making recommendations to them, I would suggest you make them as, as a citizen and let them review it that way, as far as their recommendations, even though, you know, it's very possible you're going to be reviewing it later on also.
Yes, I have no intention of giving them specific recommendations, but I do have issues that are hopefully there. I'm hoping that they would address, I guess is the best way to put it, or potentially ideas about how to, ideas that I have, that I could put forth. Thank you for your advice.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody. Next item, Water Park FY20 recap and FY21 forecasting. Holly?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we provided Town Council COVID-19 impact summary report, which basically outlines the impacts of the 2020 season due to COVID-19. So just in terms of general information for the public, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park is a self-supporting budget that does not take funds from our general fund. Per the resolution, the mayor and Town Council did limit access to the park to town and county guest only due to COVID-19. And we really, in looking at this analysis, found that that decision was the right decision to make due to the fact that the park was able to recoup seasonal costs with their seasonal revenue. The one issue that we did have at the park is that we do have a fixed cost that carried over and our seasonal revenue was not able to cover the fixed costs for the year due to the lower capacity. So just some quick statistics for Town Council as we move into the next calendar year and look at what restrictions might need to be in place with COVID for 2021. To compare our seasonal guest count from 2020, a typical normal season, to 2019, had a significant drop, obviously, in the guest count. It actually decreased revenues by 71% as well. So we have our revenue numbers from 2020 to 2019. So you can see that large drop there. Reflective of that decrease in revenue, we did decrease expenses as well. So our staff coverage was less. We were on a pretty bare bones staff coverage of the park, with the exception of our lifeguards. We obviously have some limitations there in terms of safety coverage that still needs to be maintained. But that lower expenses did help offset some of the lower revenues that we received for the 2020 year. This is just a quick summary of what our staff coverage would look like on a normal year versus the COVID-19 2020 season. We're very happy to let you know that the current impact to reserves is zero. So that includes water park reserves and the general fund reserves for the 2020 year. But as we planned for 2021, we wanted to just cover some of the resident satisfaction and safety measures that were put in place and then look at a couple of different options that we could consider in the future for the water park. So resident enjoyment, as I think- So, uh, resident enjoyment, as I think many have heard, was really at an all-time high. Uh, they enjoyed the lower capacity. They enjoyed the feelings of being safe in the park. Staff did a great job at continually monitoring the safety protocols to make sure they weren't adhered to throughout the season. Some of the safety measures implemented, uh, with the, the staff did a great job of completely pivoting to 100% virtual interaction. So all of our staff orientations, interviews and training were conducted virtually with the exception of our lifeguards. We were doing health screenings at the park, um, before staff were entering the workplace. The capacity, uh, the guest count was decreased to 25% of our legal capacity. The park was monitored through electronic registrations. This is a new electronic reservation system that was implemented this year that would allow park management to have an understanding of our attendance prior to the start of the day, which helped manage staffing as well. Contact tracing was implemented to every guest entering the park. That information was registered for the health department, uh, if that was needed. Sanitizing was obviously increased. Sanitation stations were, uh, improved. Plexiglass sneeze guards at all of the points of sale as well. Online food ordering substantially helps decrease lines and decrease contact between, uh, individuals seeking food. Obviously, we had the mandatory mask order in place for all guests who were the age of five. Some of the key lessons learned, um, is really that that obviously the council's decision to limit the capacity was, was the right move. We provided about 180 local jobs to our, uh, residents and county residents. And our seasonal costs were offset by our seasonal revenue. So at the end of the year, uh, the, the park ended up in a better situation than had the park been closed in the entirety. One of, another lesson learned is that our legal capacity at the park is 1,363 attendees. And that's really recognized that that is too high. The park has self-set its capacity at 800 guests for the last several years. And the plan is to continue to monitor that capacity and keep it at a lower level for comfort level and safety. It's definitely recognized that decreasing the capacity will increase our local attendance. Uh, we had more town and county guests this year than we have in the past. And so we do believe that providing a more comfortable environment will continue to increase that. However, increasing the capacity restrictions, believing it local only, um, would not increase attendance or revenues. And we say that because, uh, we did not reach our maximum capacity uh, at the 25% with just town and county guests. So that should be recognized. And obviously spending patterns are different for our local guests versus our general admission guests. So there were some impacts to other areas. Our guests that are local are not spending as much on other, um, things that we have at the park. So our financial analysis for fiscal year 2020, and just to point out, this is a comparison of year over year. So these numbers actually take the, the season, uh, and looks at where we are now versus where we would have been. Say in a normal season, so our actual as of November 30th, 2019. So you can see here, uh, the differences between our revenue is, is pretty significant. 71% decrease. And our expenses as well dropped by 38%. Mayor, did you want me to stop at each of these slides or just recap at the end?
Uh, you can recap at the end. I'm going to take, uh, council questions when you're done. They've had a good time to look at this.
Okay. And then moving on to fiscal year 2021. So this is, this is basically a picture of this current fiscal year. If we leave everything the same. So if we do not make any changes and we open the park in the same manner in, and at Memorial Day weekend. Which leaves us at a projected deficit.
Right.
So in, in looking at that, um, and, and still knowing that we have some unknowns in terms of COVID, uh, we just wanted to put together some things that could be considered and obviously not anything that needs to be decided at this very moment. But as we move into the next season, we wanted to provide a couple scenarios that could be considered. One of the things that we have, uh, at the park is, um, an increase in cost. Our minimum wage is increasing again, which is raising our cost of the park. Uh, we have not adjusted the rates at the park in quite some time for town and county. We haven't adjusted them several times for our out-of-county guests. We put together a snapshot of, of what the suggested rate would be for both town, county and out-of-county. Which for town and county, it's basically a $5 increase. And I'll, I'll move on and we can come back to that if there are specific questions. But basically, uh, that, that increase will help us, um, on our bottom line. So this here is some different scenarios that could be considered. We looked at how we could adjust capacity and still keep the numbers low, uh, but offset some of the projected loss. So scenario number one is basically our current scenario now that were, that we were under, under the 2020 season. And as we moved through, we, we provided, uh, scenario two, three and four, which adjust, uh, our mix of attendees. So scenario two provides that some county guest, uh, out-of-county guest could enter the park. And there is a change of our revenue. And then we have a line item that provides you with a number, um, for keeping the park closed to town and county only on Tuesdays and Wednesdays as an option. Scenario three, we've bumped up the capacity limit to 450 and also have a mix of town, county and out-of-county. And we've still provided that option for closed to town and county only on Tuesday, Wednesday. Scenario four bumps us up to the 525 guest mark and also provides closure for, uh, town and county guests on Tuesday and Wednesday. To look at what these numbers, uh, could end up changing our bottom line. This graph is, is provided for you, just a projected change by scenario. One, two, three and four. And then total projected net loss by scenario. And this is for, again, fiscal year 21. So our recommendations at this time are to plan to open the park on Memorial Day weekend and adjust our operations based on scenarios as we follow, uh, COVID-19 positivity rates and vaccine progress. Think that, that, that is going to be the pivotal point as to how we move forward in this next season. But definitely, uh, would like to suggest considering resident-only benefits, um, with, with any of the options for one or two days.
Thank you Holly.
So I'm, I'm going to begin with some, some comments from the, uh, the council, beginning with the council vice president. But first I, I just wanted to, oh, for one, thank you. Thank you Holly. Thank you Marilyn. Um, and obviously that this is nothing we need, that we need to make decisions on tonight. But the, uh, you know, the, the count, the budget work sessions really are going to begin in, in three months. And we thought this was a very good opportune time to, you know, wrap this up and put something before you guys to start, you know, thinking about what, you know, what, what we want to do. I, I do want to conclude that by just saying that the, the, the final weekend of the water park, I spent a lot of time there each day at the, um, exit entrance. And I heard from just scores of people, and I got to tell you, the council hit a grand slam on this decision last year. We, we really, the, the citizens were just so grateful, so happy that we did what, what we had to do that the, the children had a summer. That it was, you know, local, that they were able to just, you know, spend more time with their neighbors and friends, you know, during these, the, you know, pandemic times. Uh, they were very understanding that, you know, that, that the town was going to lose money. But they also understood that, you know, the, these children are only going to have one summer that year in their life. And, you know, why cancel summer, uh, for, for these children, you know, when we can, you know, hopefully make up, up a loss later. So I, um, and I did hear over and over again from some very, very understanding people that said, you know, they, they said, Pat, you know, you know, I know we can't do this town and county only forever. But if you guys, meaning the council and me, if, if you guys can figure out a way to, uh, to do this one or two days a week, that would be cool. So I mean, it was, it was really a proud experience to be out there and to hear not only, you know, their gratitude. But they also understood that, you know, while it wasn't something we could continue to do moving forward forever, would we kindly look at some slow days to have, uh, you know, to have some local only days? So having said that, I applaud the council for your actions last year or early part of, of this year. And, um, I know you've had time to look at it. So I'll, I'll begin with the council vice president, uh, and we'll go from there. Valerie?
Yeah, Pat, good synopsis. Um, I just, I think we need to make it clear that and correct me Holly if I'm wrong, but throughout this last water park year, is it fair to say that through COVID tracing that not one case of COVID was revealed to have been initiated by the water park? Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct.
That is amazing, folks. Y'all should be really proud of yourselves. Think about that. Think about this pandemic that we're going through. And the water park as an entity did not cause a COVID case. That's something to be extremely proud of. And like Pat said, we were able to give the kids a little bit of a, of a summer. And so that's really cool. And, you know, we need to stress that, that it was done safely. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily think we've done a really good job of saying just how successful that was because it's pretty darn impressive. Looking at the scenarios when I did, um, I'll just say straight off that going from 800 to 500 guests, which would be basically scenario four, um, I'm very much in favor of, um. Um, I've always thought of the water park as an enterprise fund. I understand we're in a pandemic and we're in a unique situation. But, um, if the legal, um, number of people that can be in there is 1,363. If we brought that down to 800 normally in our normal running and it was a bit overcrowded, I think we should at least try to shoot, shoot for in my mind, um, scenario four. One thing that wasn't raised in this that I think we ought to consider or think about, or at least have, you know, half a, half an eye on is that although we talk about these losses, we haven't really said where we're going to make up those losses. And my presumption is, is that the general, you know, the water park is going to be knocking on the general fund. And so we, we just need to keep that in mind that, you know, this was not addressed as to we intend to make up those, um, those losses. And I think, um, and I've been one of the primary, uh, problems in this and that, you know, we've, we've, I think we've always given the water park a really hard time. Like, it can't be subsidized. You can't, you gotta make money, um, try to do your own maintenance. Um, and I've been really hard on that myself. So, you know, you, you can blame me as being a long-time town council person who's always pushed for having the water park be self-sustaining. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why we've always pushed to have more capacity and, and all that sort of thing. And, um, I just, you know, we need to be a little careful. I think we've done an awesome job. Um, but we do need to address where that difference is going to come from. And one of the things that I thought of, and again, I don't think it was addressed is have we, well, let me just ask, do we give, Holly, do we give like Chesapeake Beach resident rates to anyone that's not a resident, like maybe like hotel guests or someone like that? Maybe they could be charged the normal out-of-town rate if they're getting any sort of discount. Do they get a discount?
They do, they do not. Uh, they would get a group rate if, if they were working under a group rate scenario. But the only one that would receive a town rate would be a town, a guest of a town resident. So if, if, if a town resident brings in a guest, they're going to see the, receive the town resident rate.
Okay, so there's none of those sorts of discounts or anything going on. That's good. I was going to say, because that's one thing that we could change to lighten up this revenue if we needed. Um, anyways, those are some of my comments. Like I said, I think in the grand scheme of things, I think, you know, depending on what, what phase we're in with the state, where COVID is, um, and safety and all of those necessary concerns. I, I would, I would look for, towards scenario four. And I would also encourage us to, if at all possible, have, you know, respect our citizens that pay taxpayer, pay taxes here. And have the, you know, the two days for town and county residents only. I think that'd be absolutely lovely. I do think raising from, well, we'll see. I mean, we'll talk about the rates. I'm sure the other town councilmen will bring it up. And we'll see where we go from there. And I understand if we have season passes, I think that's a good way for a lot of Chesapeake Beach residents to get around that, that $10 to $15 increase. We just encourage them to buy their season passes. Are there any thoughts of increasing the price on the season passes or leaving them the way they, they are?
There is a slight increase there of about, of $5. But in the goal there is, is, like you said, uh, we, we would expect most residents to purchase the season pass.
And that would be my hope also. And so I, I see, you know, you know, when the time comes, we can discuss those rates. And, uh, so that's what my initial thoughts are. But once again, I want to emphasize that this town council, this administration, this mayor, no COVID tracing led to any COVID cases directly linked to the town of Chesapeake Beach Water Park. And that is commendable. Well done.
Thank you Valerie. Uh, Charlie?
I will start out by saying that, uh, I was one of the skeptics that, uh, we could actually open the park and have the success that, uh, Valerie just echoed. So I will tip my hat to that effort, to, uh, Marilyn and, and everyone else. It's, it's actually pretty remarkable when you look at, at everything else that's going on. It is remarkable. I, you know, I, I won't repeat a lot of what Valerie said. I think there's a lot, uh, for us to decide on coming down the pike. Everything that I read, the scientists that I talk to, it's highly unlikely that, uh, it, it's going to be a while before things return to normal. So scenario four could be our goal. Uh, whether or not we'll be able to have the counts up as high as they are, I think is, is very much in question, but hopefully, uh, we will be able to. The only sort of cap I'll put on that is that whatever we do, we need to be as vigilant this coming year as we were last year. Because I can guarantee you that by Memorial Day, we will still be in a very, um, different, uh, scenario than normal. So all the things that we did right, uh, last year, we, we will need to continue to do right probably for the entire balance of the coming season. And I have now every confidence that that will happen, uh, as we have already seen. So thank you for that.
Thank you Charlie. Uh, Larry?
A couple of observations and some questions in here. Uh, just to start off, this is the retired engineer in me speaking. As I looked at the financial analysis fiscal year 2020, I was struck by the bottom line. Scroll all the way down to the bottom on the surplus deficit. I'm looking at something different here.
You said 2020 Holly?
2020, yeah.
Oh, 2020, sorry.
There, stop. Nope. You look at those two numbers in the very bottom, they are within $70 out of $200,000. Have been exactly the same except 180 degrees apart. That, that just struck me as, oh my God, it's almost spooky. Some other questions, I, at least in the packet that I've got, I don't see the slide in here, the water park rate schedule. If you could maybe just send that along some other time, Holly, I'd appreciate it. If you could maybe just send that along some other time, Holly, I'd appreciate it. That one, I don't have it in my packet. And then just echoing some earlier comments. If we had to decide right now, I I would support scenario four. Right column, that being the town only, town and county only on mid weeks, just for the revenue. However, I I think it would be interesting at some point to have a discussion of. If we looked at any of these other options, what adjustments would be necessary? I mean, we're looking at a significant decrease. In revenues here, what what adjustments would have to be made at that water park? Obviously, we can't sustain the operations that we had this year with the bottom line impact that it had. So what would we need to do to accomplish it? And I'm not asking that question right now. I'm just saying at some point in the future. I'd be interested in hearing a little bit of the, you know, so what if we did that one? What what does that mean to us? That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, definitely, it was, it was definitely great that we didn't have any cases down there. I think that. I agree that certainly we need more study to make a better decision here. I'm just going to kind of poke and prod some of these facts a little bit and turn them over for reflection coming coming down the pike here, I think so. And in no particular order. One thing, though, I wanted to ask, I thought that. I know the state had allowed twenty-five, when they, the state had allowed twenty-five percent capacity for these types of facilities. I thought that the town made a specific effort and targeted to twenty percent, not to twenty-five. Is that not correct?
We were at twenty-five percent capacity.
The entire season?
Correct.
All right, so I'm, I'm wrong then that that the town, that the council had agreed to twenty percent. Capacity. For that, okay. I clearly thought I remember us agreeing to twenty percent, and it just really, that's what I've been telling people too, that we went less than what the state said. And we weren't even hitting that. I also don't recall in early conversations. That this, we were heading for a hole in this. I'm a little surprised, but I think that part of it is I'm trying to understand, wrap my head around the numbers, you know, clearly. And so on that. Please bear with me. Since we have an annual fixed cost of seven hundred thousand, and that's may basically what the loss is there. What what are our fixed costs? Just examples of our fixed costs, because because further in the report, it shows that the current impact to reserves is zero. So I'm trying to understand that.
Right, so so our our variable costs are all, are pretty much all of our seasonal seasonal wages. Any kind of chemical that is needed to to keep the pools running. Our fixed costs are all of our costs that have to happen no matter what. So we do have some salaries that are. Year round salaries, that that's one item that's within our fixed cost. Let me go down here and see it. We have a medical and life insurance, that's a fixed cost. Retirement is a fixed cost. A lot of our professional fees are considered a fixed cost. Some of the supplies are not variable and are fixed, as well as some of the. Utilities are definitely going to be your recurring cost, regardless if you're open or not. And insurance is is obviously going to be one of your fixed cost also.
It seems like part of figuring all this out too is considering the fiscal year end, which is the end of June twenty twenty-one, right? Is that right?
Yeah, yeah. Say that again, about June twenty twenty?
The, our fiscal year ends June, the end of June twenty twenty-one, right?
That's correct.
How are there no impacts to reserves if we're projecting losing money? Am I, am I, am I?
No, I can answer that question. So so we did have a. It's on here in one spot. It was one hundred and forty thousand, Dale, if you can correct me if I'm wrong. For our first, to close out fiscal year twenty, we did have a slight loss. However, we were able to absorb that within the checking account of the water park. So we did not have to take funds out of the reserve is is to to answer that question.
Well, I guess the further that that my question there, just my question mark over that. How we've got a zero current impact to reserves when. Some of this other data clearly shows that. There's no way for us to have zero there. Am I misunderstanding these facts?
We, we were able to absorb that loss in our general checking account for the water park. So we did not have to take funds from any reserve.
Approximately, how much was that? Do you know?
It was about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
It's at the bottom, one hundred ninety-one thousand, yes.
Again, just kind of poking and prodding some of these facts and turning them over. I know we'll repackage together and it's an important decision. I know that. There's some more diving and reflection on these things. We have to see what the positivity rate is and what the state recommendations are moving in closer to Memorial Day. I'm on board certainly with opening up. We should certainly be prepared to carry on at a certain levels. If things haven't improved by that time, and I'm okay with that too. But it seems pretty clear to me that. That 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 what we've been doing can't be perpetuated at all. In fact, any of these scenarios. Seem to have some kind of drag on the the water park budget. And I would like to better understand that in the months ahead, I think. Yeah, because again, our some early reports that we had, didn't seem like we were really heading towards a hole and.
So so just to clarify, the early reports throughout the season, we focused on seasonal costs and seasonal revenue. So those did not take into account the fixed costs.
Fair enough, and I'm not saying anybody was wrong. I'm just trying to understand and digest everything and just just to. Ask, ask some good questions here, I guess. I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm on board with increasing rates for town residents for twenty twenty-one. I could be if. There was a, if it really showed that we absolutely had to have it in order to be solvent there. I'm definitely in agreement with with the vice president there that, you know, we do want that thing to at least break even. It would be great. I'm not, I'm not opposed to taking losses because of this pandemic for the betterment of the community. You know, we've all kind of been there already. But I would just warn in trying to increase the cost for the residents there. I'm op, I'm open to almost any of the options there. I just, I think. Probably need to reflect on this stuff and. A little bit. I had a question about the rotten reel. It just came up. And in blanket group rates. Does the rotten reel doesn't get like a, just a autonomous blanket group rate that they can give tickets to to people there? Or, in other words. The folks that are renting the, the hotel over there and using those facilities. When they want to use the water park, they individually come and buy tickets for the park. Is that the case?
That's the case. You you could have a group rate, but they're not receiving any benefit from the town in terms of town resident rate of any kind.
But if they're getting a group, if the town, if if the rotten reel is getting an autonomous group rate, that they're able to sell tickets at a discounted rate. I I'm not sure how the body feels about that. This question there. It's just a total aside, really. Yeah, I I don't know. I never, really don't have any comments. I don't really want to. Alan and Larry both looking at that option for, you know, I'd just like to. Get a couple of months and have us consider some of this stuff a little more. And I, and I think that we may find too, possibly, that moving a month or two down the road here. Some of this may come into better focus for us on what the decision should be, that's all. So I think that's all I have to to lend to this right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So a lot of good comments so far. Don't have a lot to add to them. I did want to just observe that under the scenarios. You know, the between one and two is kind of where the biggest junk happens, and that's by including the out of county guests. So, so, you know, in in terms of balancing risk and benefit, you know, that may be a a good choice. But but I agree that, one, we need to have that conversation about where we're going to make up the difference. And at some point down the road, and two, it's way too early to really make a decision at this point. But I really appreciate y'all putting this together and starting to think, getting us to think about it now, moving forward. I think this is a a great tool that you've provided. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. And lastly, Derek?
Yes, thank you. No, I I want to just read what Keith just said. This is a. Very, very nice product, really well done on this and providing a very good snapshot and summary of. Where we've been and where we where we think we're going. Also want to echo what was stated before about just how remarkable it was to have the success that we did this year. So excellent job by everyone there. I I want to say I'm I'm very much supportive of the local only days. In this column that we're looking at now. And I I think. I think we we definitely need to consider that for our residents in in any scenario that we look at. Couple of things I just want to, I guess, peel back on a little bit. And if we can go back to the twenty twenty. Comparison. Couple of these numbers, just is is more curiosity for me. If you could scroll down to the bottom, the expenses. And a couple in particular, you know, for instance, utilities and the insurance lines. It struck me that even though we were open less days this year compared to the year prior. It was quite a bit more. Is there a COVID reason for that? Or, I mean, what would be the the understanding at the utilities and especially the insurance? You know, what, why would the insurance be, you know, over four times more this year than it was in nineteen? That just, I I don't necessarily need the answer tonight, but that just struck me as odd, you know, why there was such an increase unless it was specifically COVID related. But I was just curious about that.
Dale, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, this is Dale. I was going to say, I I can research that and get back to you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. It just, again, stuck out to me a little bit and why this year would be so much more than the year prior.
But the one thing with insurance I could just mention is that we did have a reallocation of our insurance to really ensure that it's allocated for entity. So prior, it was, we had, did have some errors, so that that's likely what it is with insurance, but we'll definitely get you all recap.
That would make sense. That would, that would make sense. And then to the bottom line slide. And when you, we show the total projected net loss by scenario. One, down, down a little bit further there. So. I guess I want to try to understand the difference between the no change and the scenario one, because I understand that to be essentially carrying forward the same. The same situation, capacity wise, guest wise, but it's thirty, essentially thirty thousand dollars less.
That is just the rate change. So that's just taken into account the.
So the, so the estimated rate change that being proposed is, okay, strictly, that's all that is, okay? And then even in scenario four, which represents full capacity at the twenty nineteen average. But still substantial loss with the with the rate change. So I guess what did we do right in twenty nineteen that we're not accounting for here? Because that's about a six hundred thousand, six hundred, almost seven hundred thousand dollar difference. From the positive after twenty nineteen to an estimated almost half a million there, under a full capacity scenario. Do we, do we know, I mean, what that would, the result of that?
Go ahead, Holly.
I I guess I was a little confused about that. So the question is. Why are we at such a loss?
Yeah, so I I look at scenario four as essentially replicating twenty nineteen. Since it talked about full capacity at the twenty nineteen average capacity.
So I'm sorry, so that that's actually not the full capacity. So twenty nineteen, we had about eight hundred guests, so that's at five twenty-five. So there is a difference in the capacity. We're suggesting full capacity come down to a lower number. So that that is a difference from a two thousand nineteen full capacity.
Okay, I misunderstood, because the previous page it showed average five hundred and twenty-five guests, and that's, so that's what I was.
And if I could eject for one second, Derek, all of these scenarios include having. You know, two local only days, and we didn't have that in.
Right, right. And that's, there's some difference there, of course, but not that substantial. So yeah, again, I don't need these answers today, because we're going to have a lot of time to look at this and digest it more. But those are just a couple of things that kind of stood out of wanting to understand a little bit more before, you know, we get further along in the discussion. But no, once again, this is a great product. And I I think this is very important, especially. You know, in the situation we're in, in in this fund in particular, I think it's. It's great that we can look at it now in early December and have time to. You know, like I said, to digest it more, have some more questions and and, you know, really dive into the the next budget early next year. So thank you for this.
Just to clarify, so that is the numbers for the projected net loss, they are pulling, as the mayor said, from this line item here, not. Total potential revenue. It's pulling from the closing on Tuesday and Wednesday for town and county only, just just to to point that out.
Right, okay. All right, thank you, Holly.
All right, thank you, everybody. This was good to get this done before the year end. Next item, FY twenty budget reconciliation. I think Dale has a pretty good story to 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 tell us. So Dale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you can see in front of you is our, my treasurer's report. And it shows, or the focus is on the fiscal year twenty budget review. I'm not going to go through all the detail of my report, but I would like to take a couple of minutes and talk about a high level. As you can see, we had twelve expense line items that were over budget for fiscal year twenty. When you drill down in that, half of the twelve were for duplicates, meaning it was the same account. But in different funds. In the report, as you can see, I provided a causal for each line item. And then after the causals, I provided a a line item that had underage. That would cover the overages for the funds. There should be no issues in fiscal year twenty-one with any of these accounts. I've gone back and looked at them all, and we're in great shape, and we shouldn't have to talk about any of them. I would also say twelve line items, at least from my perspective, is pretty good based on the number of line items that we have. So I think it's a, as the mayor said, I think it's a pretty good news story. Moving forward, thinking about January. Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we plan to do a recap of fiscal year twenty. A current status of fiscal year twenty-one, as well as a forecast of fiscal year twenty-one. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. That's my quick overview.
Yeah, I I think what I, what Dale was reiterating, what I had told him. We're, we're hoping by the January work session to have a total recap of FY twenty to include exhibits. So the council can see everything. And a sort of a snapshot of the first six months of FY twenty-one, so we know where we are. Obviously, we, you know, this is unlike other years, we we made some some COVID-based decisions. So it'll be nice to have a, have a look at how we did after six months. And then, and and then we'll have a, have a forecast of how we see the, this current year, you know, trending to its completion. So stay tuned for that. That's going to be in our January work session. So thank you, Dale. I'll take remarks or questions. thank you, Dale. I'll take remarks or questions from the council, starting with Derek.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great report, Dale. I really liked the detail and especially you know, each, both with each fund and then the line items in particular. I'm really not really overly concerned with any of these, honestly. You know, and budgets are what they are. I mean, they're projections and, you know, if we're looking at 12 expense items across five budgets and $13 million in budgets or whatever the number is, this is pretty well done. So again, all of these are rectified within their own budgets, as suggested. So no, I'm fine with all these. Good job, Dale.
Thank you, Derek. Keith.
Yeah, thank you. I will echo those sentiments. A great job. I don't have any questions regarding this. I really appreciate the explanations that were given with each of the items. So thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Greg.
I don't have any. I don't have any questions about this data. Thanks, Dale.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg and Larry.
Echoing a previous comment, given the craziness that we've all been experiencing since March, it is quite admirable that we are in as good a shape as we are. And thank you to everybody for that, Dale, especially for keeping an eye on this. And I would just encourage that we as we go forward, since we don't see any immediate respite from this craziness coming up, we just need to keep a very close eye on our budgets and make sure that nothing jumps up out of the weeds and surprises us. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And lastly, sorry. Charlie in there. Sorry, Val.
I, you know, Larry stole my comment anyway, so you it was okay to skip me. This is all great news, but you know, we're just we're we don't want to get cocky. So that that January, that'll be a fun work session. Can't wait for that.
All right, very good. Valerie.
Yeah, no, just really, as everyone else said, echo what was said, 12 differences in five budgets reconciled within each individual budget is quite remarkable. And once again, the council should be commended along with the administration. Great job. I mean, this is well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dale. Okay, Council Lightning Round. I'll start with Valerie.
Let's see, in 45 minutes, go Buffalo Bills. Oh, Merry Christmas. Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with this town council over the past four years. I'm truly, truly blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Where am I at here? I'm sorry. Charlie, thank you.
As a Pennsylvania native, I am finally getting a couple of wins in among my teams, but I've adopted the Steelers. So I believe they're playing as we speak. I might have to check that when we're done. I have nothing further. I look forward to the next four years for sure. And I'm sure we'll all be talking soon.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry.
Couple of things. One is, again, congratulations, Holly and Jay and Mayor and everyone on Light Up the Town, given the again, unusual situation. I thought you did an excellent job of trying to pull something together, and thank you for doing that. Several of us, Holly, Jay and myself are participating in the Stormwater Solutions program. We had our first meeting last Wednesday, and we've got some more coming up. We'll keep you all posted on that. Next meeting of the Calvert Economic Film Advisory Commission is this Wednesday. I'll report on that at the next council meeting. Councilmember Morris and I are scheduled to participate finally in another meeting of the Naval Research Lab Remediation Advisory Board that has been dormant for, gosh, Greg, I can't even remember, very, very long time. But anyway, they're going to finally open that thing up again this Wednesday. Thank you, Holly and Jay, again, for the at least temporary guardrail along 261 there where the truck took out the railing. That was a very dangerous situation, and I hope State Highway can get their butts in gear, get out there and fix it. Not so much for this group, for anybody who might be watching this on YouTube. If you're interested in a Christmas tree, Firehouse has signed Christmas trees again this year. Come on by. And as posted on the town website, Firehouse is going to be hosting Santa driving around town starting this Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg.
Yeah, I wanted to. I was going to send you an email, Mr. Mayor. I might just take this opportunity to voice my request. For our next council meeting, we request that the council be updated on the Highlands Water Sewer Project.
We're probably going to take care of that sometime this week.
Okay. I'm looking forward to the last council meeting of this term. It's in a couple of weeks. And I'm certainly looking forward to the first meeting of the new term. And whenever we get back into that wonderful town hall, it's going to be a day to have a couple of beers, that's for sure. I just like to emphasize with everybody, I know everybody's got their problems and try to be sensitive to your neighbors and be patient, but we all have the ability to make happy holiday memories with our loved ones. So let's do that for sure. Good night.
Thank you, sir. And Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just trying to get off, get unmuted there. Thursday night, 6:00 PM, we have an opioid abuse awareness committee meeting. Hope folks can join us. And I'll be reporting out on that at our next town council meeting. And also heard a couple of folks mention, you know, Christmas lights and Christmas trees. I don't know if you can see it in the background there. That tree is from the fire station. So yay. And collaborating with some of my neighbors here. Bruce Wall, the instigator and mastermind behind it all and getting our community together and and you know, sharing cheer through our lighting displays. So if you haven't had a chance, I hope you can take a drive through. He's got music playing on the FM station and the lights are all blinking in 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 time with the music. So y'all have a great evening and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Keith. And lastly, Derek.
Yes, thank you. Actually, a question for Keith real quick. The station, the FM station, do you know the number offhand? Sorry to put you on the spot.
You did. I think it's something like 87.6, but I can check and get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the garage. Like when you drive by, you can see it.
Yeah, I wanted I was I was going to set my station before I went, though. That's why I so, okay. But yeah, on to me. So we are planning to have a walkable community advisory group meeting next Monday. Reached out to our planning firm to get the results of our three week long public input process and hoping they can provide us a snapshot, good snapshot of those results as well as the comments that were submitted. There were substantial participation by the public. So we're very eager to to see that and understand the final steps to finalizing that plan. As well as, I won't spill the beans, Charlie, but Charlie's is working with another one of our members on a new initiative for our group and eager to hear more about that as well. And we'll, both of us will provide updates to you all next Thursday.
Additional funding opportunities.
Can I ask a question of Derek at the end of the lightning round?
You want to ask it now?
Yes, Derek, is it confirmed the luminaria on Saturday night?
It is, yes.
What time? What? So what are the hours for that?
So they light up at 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Yes. Light up at 5. And yeah, so yeah, encourage everyone to come out to Chesapeake Village on Saturday night, weather permitting. I haven't seen the weather forecast, but yeah, the luminaries, if you haven't been out or if you've been in previous years, they're going to do it a little differently this year, which should sustain the lighting a little bit longer, even in some inclement weather. So yeah, encourage everyone to come out early evening on Saturday and drive through our neighborhood. And also make a plug, you know, some of our residents are usually the recipients of the awards for brightest beacon. So we've got some pretty nice houses to to see as well if you come through. So this Saturday at after 5. Thanks, Charlie.
Very good.
9. 87.9.
Thanks, Keith.
Keith, you're close enough. You could just put that on 24/7.
It's playing in the kitchen there.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.
See you next week.
Bye.
Great job.
Bye, everybody.